Great.
Hi.
All right, welcome. This is the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole. It's 5:30 and I have a statement to read. Public notice is hereby given that this meeting will occur electronically.
Okay, I'm not.
This meeting will occur. Oh, we're having sound problems. Is that, is that okay? Okay. Will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074 due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or www.facebook.com/murraycityutah and Murray is capitalized and slash. Okay. The meeting agenda. First is the approval of minutes, but I guess I ought to say that all council members are present and Rosalba Dominguez joins us via Zoom. Welcome, Rosalba.
Hi, sorry, it was on mute there for a second, so I couldn't hear anything you were saying.
I just said that all council members are present and that you join us via Zoom. So our first business item is approval of minutes for the Committee of the Whole for February 16th, 2021. Are there any questions or changes? If not, then I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 16th, 2021.
I'll second.
All right. Brooke, would you call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Hells?
Aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez?
Aye.
And Ms. Turner?
Aye. All right, we have three discussion items on the agenda today. The first is a report from the Murray City Youth Council, Sherry Van Bibber. Sherry, welcome. Are you there, Sherry?
You're on mute, Sherry.
Sherry.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are.
Hi, Sherry.
Welcome.
Get in with you all. Thank you. The, um, the kids are all writing. I think, I think we've got some kids online. They're all in meetings, competitions and stuff, like literally all of our presidency right now. They sent me notes that they wanted to share. We wanted to thank you. We wanted to let you know what we're doing and that we're out here doing.
All right.
If that's okay. They were so grateful that you guys included us in your budget. It, it made a huge difference, especially, especially of all years this year. Just to give you a quick, because I know my time is short, is just to give you a quick of what we do like on a yearly basis. June, we do the golf tournament with the chamber to raise funds for the students, for the scholarships, July and for nonprofits. July, we do the parade. We do a fundraiser, face paint. August, we recruit. We plan what we're going to do for the, the following year. September, we prep for the Haunted Woods. That's our big one. Thank you, Kim Sorenson and Murray City for that one. I think this will be year number six. We did, two years ago, we did almost $20,000 and we turned that back over to nonprofits like that have to do with the prevention of child abuse and domestic violence survivors. So we, we do, we work with all of the cities. All of the exchange clubs come in and help run that. The students all help run that. It's, it's huge. You guys know, um, the city knows. Kim still won't take it back. We keep trying to talk him into that, but he's yet to, to fold. October takes a ton. November, we work on get the vote out. Also, in the summertime, we work on primary day and running a debate for those who are running and getting the citizens to be able to meet who's running in the primary. December, they did a gift wrap fundraiser this year and, and raised about $500. In January, they did, we usually have legislation day down at the Capitol. We work a lot with Gene David and, and Carol Spackman Moss and we work with all of our legislators that, that's worked with Murray. They're fabulous to include the kids. They take them for tours. This year was really hard not to be down there. We were down there last year. February, we, um, our plan was, and we have done in the past years, we work with CERT, we work with George Zaboral and do the Community Emergency Response Team for Youth. I trained with a Detroit group to be able to take that program down to the youth age. And so we put that together, George and I, so that we could train as many kids with that. We write grants and get them backpacks and things so that they're able to take care of their neighborhood when that happens, if, when that happens. March, we usually are prepping to do, go to USU for Leadership Council and conference, and that's a three-day conference. And we compete with all the other city council groups in this, in the state. We have won that in the past. Of course, we didn't do that last year or this year, so we're not doing that. We worked with the Rotary Club on Saturday. We had about 20 kids out doing, the Rotary Club called and said, we have 10 sites, we're giving you three. We're giving you Murray Park, Murray High School and the Police Training Center. So we had a really good turnout for that. In April, right now, we're hoping that we're going to be doing the prevention of child abuse, planning the pinwills and, and promoting the prevention of child abuse and, and working and the, the resources that we have in the city that are out there for, for those needs. May, we're putting together graduation project. All of our seniors, we have a red cord that all of the seniors will get for graduation for their humanitarian service and, and their hours of service that they put in. Just the Haunted Woods alone is about 2,000 hours. And then we, they've put, they put together, we have a couple of things going in March. They have made these, um, they've sewed these little packs. We did them for the fire department. We did them for the police department. Now they wanted to do it for their teachers this year and we're going to fill them with rice and it's, "Thanks for taking the heat," is what they're going to say in their little heat packs. So they're making 250 of those. All the while, they, all during the year, they're running blood drives for the Red Cross and they're also volunteering for the Red Cross, putting in firearms with the fire department and they're also working and volunteering to, to check people in at the blood drives and they're doing their own blood drives. We actually had a student win a scholarship that was running a blood drive this year too. So we have that going. And then we started the Murray Children's Food Pantry. So the kids are all involved in collecting for that all year long and helping go and stack and collect and rotate the food and pack. We do about 4,600 bags a month per family. So kids are all involved in that all along the way. I was going to see if I missed anything because, because March on, we're slammed. Yeah, and I think we got just about everything in there.
I'm exhausted just listening to you. Oh, my goodness. You guys are wonderful.
Where your Fitbit and keep up with them. But no, it's really, people say, why do you want to get the kids involved in government? And it was, we all met in August at the, down near the rec center at the pavilion and we all sat outside in our face masks. And I don't share my views, but I listened to them and with the mask and with school and it just really gave these kids an avenue to say, say their thoughts and say what they think. And we're like, why do we want to get kids involved in, in politics? We're like, look at what's going on now. We need the kids to be, they hate the bully and they hate the negativeness and they want cohesiveness. And yet, so it's just kind of really fun to listen to them and what they want and the, and the positive energy. We, I told them, the day we don't have students that want to do this is the day that, you know, I'm done. But every year, we just have an amazing group of kids pop up.
Are there any questions or comments?
Just a statement. Sherry, we, we love you. You are just amazing what you do. I, I watch you, you know, I know a lot that you're doing anyway, but I watch you on Facebook and I'm telling you, like Diane said, you wear the heck out of us. You make us exhausted what you guys do. So a big thanks to you and to all the youth, the students. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's all the kids.
Yeah, I echo what Brett says. You are a lot of fun and you take that across to the, to the kids and that's why it's so successful. Thanks, Sherry.
Thank you guys. Thanks for helping us.
Just to echo what they said, you are a model of service and thank you for teaching children how to do that and for everything you do in our community.
Oh, you're very kind. It's, I'm just the hot arrow underneath. They're the, they're the ones with the, the wings that take off. So, and, and the city is the ones that help keep us, let us do what we do and motivate the kids and the kids feel a part of the community because they're a part of you guys. You know, to, for them to know who they're, that we have commissions and what commissions are and that they, who their representative is and what district they live in. Most of the kids, no one knows that. So we want, we want them to grow up learning that and being a part of that. So thank you.
Yes, you and your.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, Rosalba. Sure.
I was just going to ask, how many seniors do you have graduating this year?
How many seniors? I think that we have the most we've ever had. I think we have about 10.
That's awesome.
I know, I had to go round up 12 cords for them and they, they love the cords. Murray High doesn't let them have the cords, but we give them anyway.
And my last question to you, and you know, I do appreciate all the service. I was a product of youth city government in Salt Lake when I went to judge. So I know how important it is to be a part of a program like this and have leadership like you, but how can we help? Like if you can have a call of action from us, what could that be for you to continue to support you in your service and the kids as well?
You know, it'll be, it'll be really nice one day when we can come in and they can actually sit down with, with you guys face to face and meet, know who their districts are and meet their district leaders. I think that would be, and I really would like to open, I want them to know who the commissions are, what the boards are, and if they have an interest in that, that they could sit in on a, you know, and, and watch a meeting or be a part of that so that they know we have traffic and safety. I had no idea what planning and zoning was and, you know, 10 years after being on it, I figured, I know what it is, at least I have a definition of it. But to be a part of the city and things like that, it's just, and to know what that is in high school, I think is so much, I would have gone a whole different direction. I absolutely love planning and zoning. And so I think I would have taken a whole different direction in my life had I known about that. So I just think these kids being able, having that face to face has been, you know, we are Murrberry RFD and it, those kids are just, they've always felt connected to our mayor and to our city council. And I just think having that relationship.
Well, even with COVID and even now, I think I can arrange, I'm going to speak for myself and not the rest of the council, but I would love to arrange to meet with any kids at any given time, even if it's via Zoom. So you can, you're more than welcome to set that up with me, Sherry, anytime.
That would be great. We might, it would be super fun to probably put a Zoom together of each person in your district and explain about your district and then have, you know, the kids be able to see that or can at least take that, that little video to the kids so they can figure out and know their districts. So that would be good. It was fun this year trying to work on getting, getting the vote out, getting people voting. And we were working on getting the seniors, as many seniors as we could to get to where we could get as many people voting as possible.
All right. Thank you so much for everything that you do for, for them and, and all your effort.
It takes blood pressure medication and caffeine.
Sherry, thank you.
Thank you guys. Thanks for what you do. Thanks for what you do for us.
We'll see you at the next meeting.
It's a date. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry.
Thanks, Sherry. All right, our next discussion item is discussion on the Municipal Wastewater Planning Program, which is acronym MWPP Report. Danny Astle and Ben Ford. Danny?
Well, thank you so much for some time this evening. I'm actually going to turn the time over to Ben to have him explain what the MWPP is. So go ahead, Ben.
I'm going to share my screen here.
Welcome, Ben.
So just, just kind of a brief summary on, on the report. It's the Municipal Wastewater Planning Program Report. This is a report that we're required to submit to Division of Water Quality every year. Certain requirements behind it kind of gives a overall general financial health of where the wastewater fund is. Gives a, we give an update on our sanitary sewer management plan as part of this report and if it's being followed, if there's any recommendations or changes we need to make with that. And it identifies if we have any SSOs, sanitary sewer overflows within the year, we have to spell that out within this report. And then goes over our capacity assurance and hydraulic modeling as well and if we're keeping up to date with that. So we'll kind of go through everything and if you have any questions at the end, more than happy to answer them. So for first page, just kind of general information, a lot of this is kind of vanilla basic stuff, so I'll hit on just the, the real high points. So I'm, I'm the main contact with the state for this report. With all of my contact information. There's, there's the five different sections of the report. So I filled this report out with some help from, from Danny and Brenda, review the finance questions in here as well. So just the, the general questions. Yes, we have a dedicated account for our wastewater fund. We're collecting more than 90%, 95% of the anticipated revenue and our reserve funds are, are being met. The annual user charge was $439.80 and that comes out to, it's about $36 a month is what the average user bill is right now. And we do not have a customer assistance program for. So this next page, basically, do we have enough sufficient funds to cover ourselves in the, in the, in the future? Do we have, so we don't have a dedicated replacement and sinking fund, but we do have our, our cash reserve, reserve funds, and that's kind of why that's, what gets considered. So basically, we do have sufficient funding to keep funding the division. This, this page covers the capital revenues, basically kind of same thing. Do we have sufficient funding to cover our capital projects that are coming for the next five, 10, 10 years? So we're currently in the process of doing a rate study to help further define this as well. So right now, our, like I just said, our last rate study was done in 2017 and we're currently in the process of doing a new rate study with Hanson Allen Loos and Zion's Bake and as well as an update to our master plan. Both of those were last done in 2017. So currently doing the rate study, yes, we charge impact fees. We have a current plan of operations and we have updated our capital facility plan. We're in the process of, of updating that as we speak. And should have, should have something to share with, with council and the mayor within the coming months on, on both reports. So this next page, basically, we use spreadsheets, GIS, city work software to identify all of our assets and track, track all of the work that we do. This, the number for the 2020 replacement cost is $6,875,000. That comes from all of our equipment, all, basically all of our capital assets, equipment, vehicles and our three lift stations that we currently operate. Nothing else too much on these next questions. We'll go to the next page. So this next page, just, this is projecting what, what our funding is going to look like for capital projects in the, in the coming years. This is a pretty good ballpark number and, and what it's going to be used for. So from the initial results of our, of our master plan, a lot of our development and projects in the coming years are going to be driven by redevelopment and where redevelopment comes in and how that's going to affect the system. So there's quite a few areas that are identified within our master plan and that, that will really determine when, when those plans come in and when redevelopment occurs, where that funding is going to go and what projects will, will take precedence. So this next section is just kind of a basic overview of our, of our system. Our largest pipe in the system is 48 inches. We have 133 miles of pipe and currently operate three lift stations. Our Fairborn Lift Station, it takes in a good majority of the, the east side of the city, goes to the Fairborn Lift Station. That's our largest. And our daily peak flows, they do not exceed by 100% or more. So. Kind of some more of the collection system in general. It was first put in in 1917. We do have some older parts of the system and 1972 is when the largest diameter pipe was installed. So this, this next section goes into discharges, SSOs. There's two classifications of sanitary sewer overflows. The class one is the most significant and you can see the justifications for those. If it's more than 5,000 gallons, it affects more than five structures. We haven't had any of those luckily. We've been good, good with that. We did have a class two within the system and that was due to a contractor on 5300 South in July bored through one of the sewer lines. That break, it remained inside the trench. It didn't exit the trench, but did damage. They had to repair the pipe, restore the pipe, but that was obviously the fault of, of the contractor, not following blue stakes. This next, uh, next page, so we've had 58 new residential connections within the last year and most of that is contributed to Murray Cove Hamlet Home Development that was finishing up on 4800 South and then the Winwood Subdivision. And 11 lots in the Callaway and subdivision as well contributed to that. We have not had any new developments that will increase our, so the BOD biochemical oxygen demand loadings by 25%. So nothing that would affect us there. And the equivalent, uh, new ERUs within the system is 64 this year as compared to last year. So we have a, a class three, grade three system. So we have to have a minimum of grade three operators and we have, I'm listed as the DRC operator, the chief operator of the system. So our minimum is class three. We have six, six total operators that are DRC certified within the system. And then we have three other operators as well that are not DRC certified. One, one grade four and one grade two system. So over certified for our system, but that's a good thing. So this next one kind of goes over the sanitary sewer management plan a little bit. Basically outlines, do we have written response plans? Are we following those response plans? And do we have written safety plans for the system, which, which we do in all of those? As far as the GIS mapping, we have 100% of our system mapped as soon as we have a, a new subdivision or something gets noticed when we're out TVing or cleaning that, that immediately gets put on a list to get up to. With the sanitary sewer management plan evaluation, we do have a, we do have a management plan that gets audited every year on this next page here. So it was public notice in 2015. As, as part of that, we have to audit at least a quarter of the plan every year. We do a, try and do a full audit of the plan every year. And this year was probably the most extensive, but still, still the whole body, body of the plan hasn't changed. Just kind of some key, with the creation of a superintendent position and a few other minor changes, it was really just some, some wording changes, a few minor things. We bought a new SL wrapped tool that helps us identify deteriorated pipes in the system and we had to add, add that to the operations portion of the plan last year as well. And we have completed a CCAP plan. That's part of our evaluation that we're going through with Hanson Allen Loos currently. So the physical condition of the, of the system, like I said earlier, it is a little bit of an older system, but we have it fairly identified of where our trouble areas are that get maintained on a, on a regular basis depending on the severity of them. So that kind of just spells this out. And I spoke, as I spoke to before, a lot, a lot of the improvements that will be upcoming in the next five to 10 years will be development driven. So that's kind of what that is stating there. We're continuing to manhole rehab and pipe rehab with lining as well. What else on this? So the, the biggest issues that we do, the biggest issues within the system that we, we come into are root intrusion and, and fog, which is fat oils and grease. So those are, those are the, the big things that we have to try, try and identify where those areas are and keep those maintained so it doesn't cause us any issues. The last question on here, does the district pay for CEU credits for the operators? And we pay for those 100%. And we do not have a written policy for those, but we do encourage further, further schooling and, and offer the tuition assistance program. So that is really, in these last two pages are just, when will it be submitted? So obviously it's being presented to you guys tonight and then we hope for approval on, in the April council meeting. And that is, that is really all I have unless anybody has any questions.
All right. Sounds like you're doing a good job, Ben. Thank you. Any questions for Ben from the council?
No, just a big thanks. Thank you, Ben and Danny.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll go to the discussion on park impact fees. Kim Sorenson.
Okay. Thanks, council. It's, it's good to see you again. So let me just, let me just explain how we got to this point where we're discussing park impact fees. You may remember that a year ago, we adopted a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan. During that, the process of adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, funding sources was, was discussed. And one funding source that is available that the city of Murray does not take advantage of is a park impact fee. So I've spent some time studying impact fees, park impact fees, and, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board discussed park impact fees a few months ago and they, they gave a unanimous support of park impact fees. And that's why I'm here tonight is to, to discuss park impact fees with you and, and get your, obviously you wouldn't be voting on anything today or, but to get your support or your direction on park impact fees. So let me just, let me just talk a little bit about what you, what we're looking at. So I've given you three charts in your packets. The first chart is fees charged by other cities. And you will notice that all of the cities surrounding Murray, with exception of Midvale, have a park impact fee. I will also tell you that Mill Creek and South Salt Lake are in the process of increasing their impact, their park impact fee. Also, you were given a, the, the chart that shows the last five years of growth in Murray City, including single-family, multifamily and accessory dwelling units. And then the final chart that you have is a chart that shows what Murray City would have collected had we had a park impact fee the last five years. Now there's three different categories of, of fees. I've tried to calculate low and then a medium and then the high level for each. So with that, let me quickly just talk about. So with that, let me quickly just talk about the the basics on park impact fees. So what is a park impact fee? It is a one-time fee imposed by the city on new construction of residential properties. The developer or builder would pay this fee at the application process when they pick up their permit. Now, one question that that most people have said, well, who really pays for this fee? Is, does that mean that our our home prices ra- rise because of a park impact fee? And and I don't know that we know the answer to that. But um relative, real estate people have told me that, no, that's not the case because the price of our homes in Murray are are determined by the market value. And that market value is determined by a lot of, a lot of different things, including the the accessibility to to parks. Um, so obviously, somebody has to pay for it. Is it the developer or is it the person that sells their all land? And and um we don't know the answer to that. But the fee is based, the the fee is based, it's important to understand that the fee is based on providing the same level of service to new development that the city is currently providing. So what can fees not be used for? So park impact fees cannot be used for operation and maintenance of current or future park facilities or amenities. Fees cannot be used to pay employees. Fees cannot be used to renovate or improve current facilities. Fees cannot be used to increase our current service level. What can fees be used for? Park impact fees, they can be used to add new parks or increase capacity in our facilities to serve new development. For example, we could purchase land. We could build new amenities uh such as trails, parks, athletic fields, pickleball courts, et cetera. Fees can also be used to expand current facilities to meet increased demand because of growth. Um, how are fees, how are fees calculated? So the the first thing that we need to do to calculate a park impact fee is a current master plan. Well, we we adopted a current master plan last year. So if we're going to to um consider park impact fees, now is the time where our master plan is is current. We then must hire an outside consultant, an impact fee consultant. That consultant will determine the current value of park and recreation assets. Um, now, these assets are are calculated at today's value and they cannot, they cannot include property or amenities that were funded by others. Anything funded by grants, by donations, uh, cannot be included in in our, the value of our current park property. Um, then they, then they calculate the current level of service for parks. Uh, whether it be, well, they'll look at park acreage per thousand people, uh, miles of trails, number of pickleball courts, number of tennis courts, basketball courts, acreage of um green space, soccer fields. So it's a very um detailed list of everything that we currently have. They then look at growth, growth projection. Once this is all determined, the impact fee is 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 formulated, let me back up. The maximum impact fee is formulated by the cost of future projects divided by the number of additional residents times by the number of occupants in each home. And currently, Murray, the average home in Murray has two-point-five-eight, I think it was, uh, residents. And that determines the maximum, it's important to understand that it determines the maximum impact fee that you can charge. From there, um, it's a policy decision by the city as to what percentage of the new growth the park impact fee would would pay for. Once that's all determined, the process um would be, the city determines what the fee would be uh based on the total amount, the total dollar value of um providing new parkland for uh new residents. A a public hearing would be held. The council would then be asked to adopt the park impact fee. If if that was adopted, then we would have a ninety-day period where the park impact fee would not be charged. This would allow those that have developments um in the process would uh would not be hurt by the new impact fee. And then impact fees that we collect would would need to be spent uh within six years. So that's kind of just a real quick summary of of impact fees. I'm, I've opened any, any questions or or discussions. Again, it's it's discussion only at this point. We're looking to see if the council supports us moving forward with looking at an impact, park impact fee. Anyway, thoughts, questions?
Questions for Kim?
I'm so happy you brought this forward, Kim. I think it's important, especially in the discussions that we're having with growth. It's important to have, to start this discussion. So thank you.
And and that's a good, good point, Rosalba. We 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 are seeing growth. We're seeing growth in in um high-density areas, which which means that uh we we may have opportunities to purchase pocket parks or or different types of facilities that will um give those residents some access to Parks and Recreation.
So um ADU units can be assessed as well?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Say that again.
ADU units can be assessed as well. Are they automatically assessed or is that additional?
Oh, okay. Um, no, they they can be assessed, they can be charged a park impact fee as well. That would be, that would be a a policy decision that we certainly would look for your direction on as we, if we study a park impact fee. So the answer is yes, they can be assessed the fee as well.
Okay, and can it go towards bike lanes? I think probably not, but I'm just curious.
I don't know the answer to that question. It definitely can go towards uh trails. Um, and and bike lanes, I I don't know the answer to that. I guess if we, if we included them, bike lanes in in our Parks and Recreation amenities now, it could, but we currently don't include bike lanes as a park amenity.
Okay. All right. Other questions for Kim? This would be a brand-new thing. I mean, that's.
I just wanna say thanks for bringing this. I think with, like, just to echo uh Rosalba, with the growth we're having, it makes sense. It's interesting looking at the current fees for other cities. Um, the widespread of the um different, different amounts per city. But it looks like the cities closest to us are all fairly similar, except for Midvale, who doesn't have one. Um, but I'm just, I'm glad you brought it. And I think one of the things people love about Murray is our beautiful parks and trails and hoping we can continue to provide enough of that for our growing population.
Yeah, more trails would be awesome. To continue the ones we've got would be wonderful. I know our citizens would love that.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. Good timing. I agree with everyone that said that. This is, the growth is growing or is coming on strong and uh and uh everyone, everyone sure loves our parks, our trails, our all, everything that we do, so. Thanks, Kim.
All right, didn't take as much time as I thought it would. So thank you, Kim. If there are no other questions, then I will go to Jennifer for announcements.
I don't have any announcements today.
No announcements. All right, then I'll see you all at six-thirty. Thank you.